I would like to call the Board of Education of St. Mary's County to order for Wednesday, January 27, 2016. May it please have a motion to move into executive session?
I move the board to enter into executive session for the purpose of personnel, collective bargaining, or legal, property acquisition issues, and student issues under Maryland Local Government Code Article Section 9-512A, numbers 1, 2, 6, and 10.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Sarita, you ready? Um, yes. Okay. I'm good. You're good? All right. All right, I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the Board of Education for St. Mary's County for Wednesday, January 27, 2016, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First is the approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion, please, to approve the agenda as presented?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Board of Lords, Ms. Lee?
Thank you. Good evening. This is an update about the Superintendent Student Advisory Council meeting that we had this past week. And at this meeting, it was, of course, all of the students from the middle and high schools, and they came together and they discussed several different topics. There was a survey that was sent out previous to the meeting to determine which topics students were very interested in and which topics they were less interested in speaking about or that they thought would not be productive to discuss at this meeting. So the resulting topics that were discussed were mental health, risky behaviors, academics and learning, especially testing, and then social connections, most specifically fights and social media. What was really awesome about this meeting that I hope that we continue to do is the use of a Google Doc at that meeting, and students had their laptops out. And then so as the tables were having discussions, after those discussions were over, students were able to go into the Google Doc and then reflect on the discussions and add their input. So all of the students that were part of the advisory council have access to that Google Doc and are able to continuously contribute to it. So I look forward to working with this student advisory council more in the upcoming months.
Thank you. Mr. Carney?
Yes. Since our last meeting, I attended the Martin Luther King Prayer Breakfast and was entertained by students from the ridge of, well, it was almost like going to Broadway for Stomp. That was excellent. And then I also attended the Flow Appreciation Day, the mentoring. There were some very moving tributes and some people who are mentors telling what they get out of the program along with what the children get out of the program. And I would highly recommend anyone who would like to volunteer to get in touch with your school because I think it's worthwhile on both ends. And then I went to the BECA. It was for scholarships, and I was very surprised at all the different agencies that offer scholarships, and it was very well attended. So the children, students are out there trying to find the money.
Right.
Shaking those trees. And then I went to the Tech Expo, and some of the courses that are available have changed since I was here before, and it was super to see how many people were just waiting to get in. You know, it wasn't, it was supposed to start, I believe it was 5:30, and by 5 o'clock, the vestibule was just full of people just trying to get in. And then after that, I went over to the Economic Development for the county and presented for the schools' needs and such, knowing that for the economy to grow, we have to have a good school system because that's what attracts, you know, besides, what does the county have to offer? One of the top things on any corporation's list is what's the school system like? Thank you.
Okay, so I went to Great Mills High School and attended the Naval Junior ROTC Inspection and Drill. That's held every two years by the area commander, who has like a large region, like on the eastern, on the east coast. The junior ROTC is under Captain Randall, who's retired, and First Sergeant Hamm, who is also a retired Marine. And they're the ones who teach and had these students. When I got there, there were numerous parents and grandparents and family members that were in the audience. There are a total of 161 students in the battalion for junior ROTC for Great Mills High School, and it is one of the largest units in southern Maryland. And these group of students attend many events, you know, whether it's to march in a parade at the Veterans Day or to do their color guard at different events. And I know that in the future, they are going to be coming here for us, so I look forward to that. They also have drill teams, sports orienteering, and academic teams. And this year, just a few of the awards that these students have received this year are from Sons of the American Revolution. These are individual awards for some of these students. Patuxent Partnership Award, Freemason Education, one Union Veterans of the Civil War, Loyal Order of the Moose Award. And the other thing that I thought was very interesting is I did get to go around and talk to a lot of the students and the parents and grandparents. And some, it's not just for students that are maybe looking to go into the military, but it's also for, you know, it's, you know, just for them to better themselves, to get some, you know, for some discipline. But some of the collegiate recognitions of the seniors this year are scholarship to Purdue, and also that same student has a presidential nomination to the Naval Academy, and that's a real big deal. Academics, other, you know, after-school activities, just different things they're participating in. Another student presidential nomination to the Naval Academy, a congressional nomination to West Point, also to acceptance at University of Kansas. A lot of these are full scholarships, some are part scholarship. One is 50 percent scholarship to the Marion Military Institute. One is to Kansas, University of Kansas. So these students are doing a lot of great things. They also do a lot of volunteer work on top of the volunteerism that is required for school. They do get out in the community. They go to Charlotte Hall, serve meals. And what I was telling you, that it's not just for everyone that's going into the military. And Captain Randall sent me a little slide presentation, and at the end, it summarizes it up. It says, "We are committed to meeting the program's core mission of instilling the values of citizenship, service to the United States, personal responsibility, and a sense of accomplishment." And I could see that when I was talking to the students, just about, you know, did they enjoy being in the junior ROTC? And it was always a resounding absolutely. They felt like they got a lot out of it, whether it's, you know, with discipline, their own personal growth, and they were very proud of their accomplishments. So I did enjoy being there. I did get to go to the debriefing afterwards with the area commander, and the students did the presentation for this captain that came in. It wasn't that Captain Randall did it. These students stood up and they gave the presentation. So I was very impressed, very respectful students. And like I said, you know, and each one of the parents or grandparents I talked to, they said absolutely, they were very, very happy that their student was in junior ROTC. So that's what I did for one of the days.
All right. So no one's going to talk about snow, but I will. I would just like to, Northern End, we have a little bit more. I would just like to thank all of everyone who was involved in cleaning the schools, in making the decision to open school, close school. It just, I know people were working during the storm when everyone else was huddled by fires and games and movies and everything like that, and they were out there with snowblowers and shovels, at least trying to get some, keep a little bit ahead of it. It's just, it was a phenomenal job, even for the number of schools that were cleaned, even by Monday. I know the Northern End didn't get hit until Monday evening and Tuesday morning, but I think everyone did a fabulous job. I don't know if we're going to get more snow this season. I'm sure everyone's wishing no after all of that, but hats off to everyone, you know, that really went the extra mile over the past almost week now in making sure that, you know, buses were clean, you know, students were safe, and just that the proper decisions were made. So, thank you very much.
Great. I attended the Judy Center Pirate Night at Green Holly Elementary School. And the Judy Center is vitally important because it prepares the students for successful entry from preschool to elementary school, and it is administered by St. Mary's County Public School under the direction of Mrs. Kelly Hall. She has a highly qualified staff of principals, teachers, parent educators, and community partners. The Judy Center helps students develop cognitive skills to enhance mental and physical well-being and to encourage strong family relationships. It also works with families to build trust in relationships and strong partnerships within the school system. And the program fosters collaborative community partnerships and wraparound services with the family. So the program basically prepares students to interact with their peers so that they can become familiar with classroom settings and obligations. At the program, there were various learning stations throughout the school, and all of them were fostering literacy. And the program was Thursday, January 14, from 5:00 to 7:30 PM. And the principal at Green Holly is Mrs. Waschula Adams. 143 parents and students attend this family night. It was a night of fun, learning, and relationship building. Overall, the Judy Center provides services for over 700 families with children from birth to five years old at Green Holly and George Washington Carver. First, the families were invited to have a full dinner consisting of spaghetti, garlic bread, salad, and a beverage. The activities covered at least five learning centers. The families would go from one center to the next. One center was a hand toss to place the ring around the alligator's neck or tail. A second center focused on making a spyglass. A third center included making a flag for your pirate ship. And a fourth center was for students to choose removable tattoos to be imprinted on their arms, hands, or legs. The last station was to make a bandana for your head covering. It was an exciting evening, and I enjoyed every minute of it. I asked the parents and guardians what they liked about the program, and here are some of their responses. A parent said, "I tried to teach my child at home, and he didn't want to listen. He was not interested. Now, after attending the Judy Center, he listens, and now he wants to learn more and more." Another quote, "My child is actually learning and learning to get along with other kids." Another parent said, "My child loves the food." Another quote, "They really care about children and families. We are in this together." And a last quote I have is, "My child doesn't like it when school is not hell. She gets very disappointed." I want to thank the Board of Education members, my colleagues, for supporting this needed program, which actually prepares students to be college and career-ready. College and career readiness does not start in high school. It starts in early childhood learning programs, such as the Judy Center, which builds a strong foundation of required skills for the next level. Thanks also goes to our partners, the Judy Center staff, Green Holly Elementary School staff, the Infants and Toughtless Program, Special Education staff, early childhood staff, Little People Daycare, Jody Payne, Local Management Board, Kelsey Bush, Public Library, Samantha, and Samantha Winkler. I had a great time, and I was one of the last persons to leave. They gave me the whole outfit. I had the parrots hat, I had the eye patch, I didn't get the tattoos. I had the bandana, I threw the toss. I just had a wonderful time. But I didn't get a chance to eat the food because I was so amazed at the number of people that were there and how much fun they were having. So we are getting them college and career-ready from birth all the way up, and our preschool programs are helping tremendously. Thank you.
Along that same vein, I attended a site visit at George Washington Carver Elementary School Judy Center recently that was set up by Congressman Hoyer, bringing in a team from the U.S. Department of Education. He wanted to show them the work that was being done at the Judy Center, and because of grants that we've received, we're able to put even a mental health professional in with the program who can make home site visits. There are so many challenges faced by families, and the wraparound services that Mrs. Washington mentioned are really comprehensive in nature, and we've been able to do that because of the partnerships we have throughout the county, but also with the support of the federal government through the U.S. Department of Education. And they were really quite taken by what they saw at the Judy Center, the work that was going on. The staff did a magnificent job in their presentation and then in the classroom visits that were held. And the students were obviously having a great time, and Mrs. Weaver and I had the opportunity to go into some kindergarten classrooms, one of which was being taught by one of our graduates, Ms. Denny. So... Yes, and don't forget the sign that said graduate in class of 2028. That was a little scary. Yes, yes. Yeah, what a, what a reality check that was. But it was wonderful because the sign that was up was in the color and logo of Great Mills High School. And the explanation was that they want the students to understand from the moment they step foot in the school that the expectation is that they will graduate from high school and they will go on to do great things, whatever it is they choose to do. They will go on to do great things, and they see that every single day. And I was really impressed by that. That was a fantastic alignment of all of our system.
The gentleman from USDE, Mr. Hicks.
Mr. Hicks.
Mr. Hicks.
Steven Hicks.
He was, he really, he praised so much what he saw, and the legislative aide who's working with Congressman Hoyer, Rachel Snyder, we'll be following up with her to talk about how well we spend our money, how well we spend their money, and how we'd like to have some more of theirs. That was really, that was really a great visit.
It was.
Okay, well, you know, first of all, I got to attend all of these things with all of you, so thank you very much for coming out and showing the incredible support that you have for our students and our staff as they, as they work together with children, from the littlest to the biggest. That really, that really, that really says something. So thank you very much for all of that. I did get an opportunity last week to go on base with Captain Heidi Fleming as she is wrapping up her time as the commanding officer of the base, and to meet the XO who will become the commander, the CO, will become the CO, Scott Stuckey. And we got a really great tour of the base. In fact, we got to go up in the tower, and there's just, there's just a lot of very impressive things going on. And they included a visit to Test Pilot School and the way they integrate that learning. And they talked about some of the internships that our STEM students have done at the Test Pilot School, which I just can't imagine a more engaging and exciting opportunity to see, you know, learning put into action, and that action is, oh, well, flying a jet. So that was a really, that was a really great opportunity. We'll finish with snow and the kudos to snow, but before we get there, one of the, one of the challenges of snow is travel, and one of the victims of the challenges of snow was our 48 children who had been attending Space Camp. And we modified their flight on Friday so they could fly out first thing early Friday morning and get in before all of the snow, and they left Space Camp, which is set up to house children and has dorms and has all, everything, and they got on the shuttle bus and they got all the way to the airport, and they got all the way to check in, and the flight got canceled. And they had, they were going to go back to Space Camp, but the roads were terrible, and they were getting snow and ice, so they had to go to the single-tree Marriott, Courtyard Marriott.
Spring.
Springs.
Spring hills.
Spring hills, yeah. Yeah, yes. And they, and they stayed there Friday, Friday night, Saturday, Saturday night, Sunday, Sunday night, Monday, Monday night, and they flew out at, they had to leave at 3:00 AM to catch their 6:00 AM flight to BWI. And so I have a whole list of people who helped, the two teachers who were marshaling all of that, Ms. Kristy Willhite and Christina Campbell, Kristen Campbell. I can't say enough about these, these two wonderful, marvelous teachers. Just the coordinating effort of feeding 48 children from local restaurants when you have no vehicle, it's just, it's, it's quite an ordeal, and it's a testament to all of them. It's also a testament, they set up a Shutterfly chat group so that they could, and all the parents were already in it, so they could see all the pictures as they were going around. We joke with, with my wife, we do pictures of the children, proof of life. I did actually deliver them to where they were supposed to be. And so the children, as they went through all of their learning and follow-on and their eating and their game-playing, it was really quite wonderful. So I did get to welcome them back at BWI on Tuesday morning. We will be recognizing both of those teachers here, and we will be sending letters to the incredible outpouring of people in the Nashville area who, some who were stranded there as well as the children, but then others who, who came and donated their time, or donated money, or donated food, or donated rides. It was, it was, it was really something. So to all of them, our kids are back safely. They had some incredible learning at Space Camp, and then they had some incredible learning at the hotel.
And how convenient, they didn't miss any schools.
No, so they, we did, we did say, as these, as these, you know, these little, I have a 12-year-old at home, and I have, you know, five days with him at home, I can't, so by 48, I can't imagine. So we did say, you know, you have administrative leave, take your time, please, you know, recover, come back. It was, it was really great. And all the parents, all the parents who were there, they showed up with really thoughtful gifts for the teachers. It was, it was really, it was really something quite special, and it just reinforces that, you know, America is a truly wonderful place where people do care about other people. And it was really, it was really quite nice. And so the last, I'm going to finish with snow cleanup, and I have some names that specifically I want to really call out by name, the Department of Maintenance, under the supervision of Steve Witten, Mark Uncle, Warren Trossback, Gary Vanucci, Joseph Bowles, Clarence Goddard, Frederick Somerville, David Quaid, Mike Mason, Anthony Coles. I mean, these are the people who went out in the snow of Saturday and Sunday and cut paths so that we could get to this building, to Department of Supporting Services, and to, and to Bethune. And then it came back on Sunday because, of course, all the work that we did on Saturday went under again on, on Sunday. The contractors who came out on Sunday and Monday and yesterday morning and the, I mean, this is so much snow, they had to do loaders and dump trucks, and they had to move all of that around. Bowles Enterprises, Inc., and Dirt Work Excavators and Crane, they just did an incredible job. And also in the Department of Operations, under Mr. Ashley Varner, all of the, all of the walkways, all the entrances, checking all the buildings, checking all the roofs, making sure that everything was just right. This was a big snow event. Even the Buffaloan inside of me recognizes that 18 inches of snow is significant accumulation. To see the way this county responded, and really, we didn't, we didn't miss much. We didn't miss a beach. I kept on, we kept on tweeting out pictures yesterday of all the lots cleared out, and then all you students tweeted unkind things back to me about, you know, we were, I was ruining their lives. But it was, it really, it really was, it really was quite amazing. So to everyone, thank you very much, and look forward to the next event. We do still have two days left, so we'll see where that gets us. And Sarita, I know you don't certainly want us to go anywhere above that because...
Well, as a senior, it's okay.
As a senior, you want to have every day possible.
You know, just to piggyback on that for a minute, when you look at the news and you see how paralyzed DC and the surrounding area is, and granted, they certainly got worse snow than we did. And yet, you look at how well our roads are cleared, the fact that we're back in school. That is really a huge testament to the coordination that goes on here to ensure the safety of everyone in addressing those snow issues, and that doesn't just happen. I mean, it is, you know, very much planned for, and so I'm sure I add my, my thanks to everyone here because we know that you, that you really went above and beyond, and you need only turn on the news to see...
To see what happens if you don't have that great coordinated...
Exactly. Thank you.
Good, fun stuff. Now it looks like Buffalo in April.
Dirty snow.
So if you want to know, if you want to know what Buffalo looks like in late April and spring break, it looks like it does outside right now. Thank you.
All right. We have two public hearings scheduled this evening. The first is the 2016-2017 school operating calendars.
No one signed up.
No comments from anyone? Okay. Moving on, the second one is the High School Program of Studies.
No one signed up.
Okay. Going through this agenda like wildfire. All right, public comment. Yes. Okay, wait, let's get my... Okay, let's see. "Board welcomes public input on policies and issues affecting our schools. We take this time to listen and consider but not comment. This is not, however, the appropriate forum for negative comments or criticisms of individual staff or students. Concerns about individual staff members that cannot be resolved at the level closest to the situation should be directed to the superintendent," down there. "This board will not permit comments criticizing individual staff or students since this is outside the scope of public comment. Additionally, the board sits as an appellate body in both student and employee appeals. The board cannot comment on or have prior knowledge of a case that would influence their ability to deliberate. To maintain the ability of the board to render a fair and unbiased decision, comments regarding individual student or personnel issues cannot be presented at public comment." Speakers must sign in at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker, and they may not yield their time to someone else. We also encourage speakers to present written statements to the board secretary, who will then distribute copies to all board members.
Do you want to raise one?
Good evening.
Good evening.
How important is class size? Jesus sometimes taught to large crowds, although he kept a consistent class size of just 12. Confucius and Socrates had countless students through the years, but we don't really know how much they faced daily. As a humble English teacher from Leonardtown High School, I'll keep my comparisons with contemporaries rather than two geniuses and the son of God. According to highschools.com, Leonardtown High School has a student-teacher ratio of 20.3. Before we pat ourselves on the back, realize that our neighbors at Calvert High School is 16.8. Patuxent High School, 16.2. Thomas Stone is 14.9. Still, my simple math, the LHS teacher tells me that I should have about 122 students. I have 122. I have 179. There's two reasons for this considerable imbalance. First, instructional resource teachers and special ed teachers do not have their own classes and also disciplines can no longer share teachers. Eliminating resource teachers would be no small leap backwards and special education teachers are a legal necessity. Also, the days are gone when you could have a gym teacher pick up a math class or an art teacher take a section of English. The enduring mandates of no child left behind eliminates this option. So what does it mean to have 32 kids in a class? Well, after taking role, it could mean that each child gets one minute and 20 seconds of my attention, which is pretty paltry by any math. But when you go above the fine 20.3 student average, you are not just adding a mannequin in a desk. You now have another very important person who will ask to keep their lacrosse sticking here in your class until practice. Ask for letter recommendation. Request makeup work while you try to get to the restroom between class periods and simply must tell you about the heartbreaking loss in the final seconds of the game against Chopticon. And yes, another concerned parent who will email you and another essay to read and grade. But this reality is actually good, albeit overwhelming, when the effect is amplified. When the student brings disruption, disrespect, truancy, tardiness, self-destructive behavior, no work ethic and a terrible peanut allergy, the emotional, emotional, physical and instructional issues are as individual and varied as the students themselves. Now, to the skeptics who say the size doesn't matter, I would issue this challenge. Imagine your teenage son or daughter wants to host a party in your home and the inevitable, inevitable question is asked, how does the number 32 sound to you now? And you're not even trying to teach them anything. My story's not unique in this moratorium when hiring teachers is ill-advised and counterproductive and I ask you to convince the county commissioners of the halting effect that's happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Next is the consent agenda. I'm seeking a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We still have no time. Okay, and with that, Mr. Hartwick.
As Mr. Hartwick is coming up, just a, a point. I know at one, at one juncture, we had discussed updating the epistle that is our public comment statement. I, I would like to just ask that, if we could expedite that, anything I can do to help that, I certainly am willing to volunteer. I do feel bad for Karen having to read the epistle.
Volunteer.
So just, you know, it came to mind as she was going through that.
We could assign each person a sentence.
Round robin? Yeah, no, I'm, I'm good, thanks.
Sixth grade language arts, I could memorize it. There you go. I'm sorry, Mr. Hartwick.
Good evening, Mr. Hartwick.
It's all yours.
All right, thank you very much. Good evening to all. Tonight, I'd like to talk to you about the repair and replacement at White Marsh Elementary School. This is a project that originally started as a maintenance repair project, but as the field investigation and the design progressed, the dollars started to add up. And so when the fiscal year 2016 fund became available to us, we thought that would be a good use of funds. And so it's primarily a CIP project at this point. I'd like to just briefly describe the project. This graphic is not the best, there's a lot of grayscale there. So you can see that we've rendered the building here. This is Thompson Creek, Thompson Corner Road, I should say, out in this direction. The main entrance to the school is about there. And then the bus loop occupies an area just in front of the, of the school. Like many of our schools, there was the original building and there were a number of additions added on to the school over the years and that certainly plays into this project. The original building is roughly that section. It was built in 1956. And this area contains the kitchen and a number of restrooms. And that system, and it's hard to read, but it comes out, there's a grease trap, then it comes down and it has a 3,500 gallon septic tank there, original, again to 1956. And then the drain fields are basically out in this landscaped area between the bus loop here and Thompson Corner Road. That's the 1956 system. That system has completely failed. And so we've, we've had to modify, we've had to close down a number of restrooms in that section of the building. The kitchen is not able to use the dishwasher, we're having to do paper products. So there's a lot of inconvenience related to that. Now, what, what we're gonna do is basically reroute this section and tie into a system that was built in 1970. And that is derived from this addition in, again, in 1970. It flows out also to an existing tank, which we're able to maintain and, and use. So the 56 laterals will be tied into that existing tank. And then that is gravity-fed to this area here. Those fields are in this area. But again, those fields are 46 years old. And so after discussing this with the health department and also taking into consideration that there was an addition in 1977 for the gymnasium and there was a 1999 expansion of the media center, all of that tied into that 1970 system. So the, the recommendation and the requirement actually is that we're gonna have to abandon that field. So we did perk test in the very best area in, in this, in the school grounds, which you see outlined there, is back on the kind of northeastern corner of the property. That's, that was the highest performing perk that we had. So basically what we're gonna do is we're gonna have to pump that waste all the way back to that area of the, of the school grounds. So it's a pretty extensive project. Now, as a replacement system, we are eligible to use the Chesapeake Bay Restoration Fund, which helps in promoting and financing a nitrogen removal system. The problem is this school is not in the critical area. So it's not required by the health department, it's not required by MDE. And if you're outside the critical areas, you're in a second priority. And there's a limited amount of funds available through the health department and we would not be eligible for those funds to even make the grant until July of 2016. So there's quite a, a time issue there. So there are some ongoing expenses that I wanna just talk about. I mean, the maintenance department is periodically pumping the 1956 field out and that's running between $300 and $500 a month. And the food service, again, with the inconvenience of not having the dishwasher, also had the expensive paper products, which is running about $400 a year. So time is imperative in moving this project ahead. So we hired the, the local firm of Soltez, based in Lenartown, to do the plans and specification. Those were advertised for bid on a Maryland marketplace on December 4th of 2015. You can see that this database, this electronic portable, portal has really become quite robust. Over 713 vendors and contractors received notification of our bid. Now, septic system tend to be done by local firms. We had five firms purchase bid documents and three firms submitted their bids on December 22nd, 2015. To recap, there were the three bidders. The lowest bid was submitted by Earnshaw Brothers at $66,400. The second was by Rainbow Construction Corporation, which is about a 5% change between the first and second. And then about a 20% was Dennis Anderson. Now, I think what's interesting about this is both Rainbow and Dennis Anderson are general contractors. Earnshaw Brothers is a firm that specializes in water, sewer and septic. That's all they do. They, they're a family-owned business, they've been in, in business since 1960. They've done work for St. Mary's County Public Schools on a number of occasions. The last project they did was they installed the large sand filtration system that was at Margaret Brenton Middle School in 2003. The engineering firm of Stolitz has worked with Earnshaw and they rate them as highly capable and very professional. And I'll say that's my, my experience as well and in conversations with the principal president and his son, I've been very impressed with their technical knowledge on this. I did wanna point out a couple of other things. And in terms of the funds required, if we accept the contract, base contract amount from Earnshaw, $66,400, we'd like to ask for construction contingency of $12,000. Whenever you're dealing with these kinds of projects with so many additions, the possibility of different site conditions, the trenching that'll be out in front of the school is gonna be seven feet deep and that's always an issue. So that's why we're asking for that $12,000 contingency. So the total for construction is $78,400. Our proposed funding for that is primarily the state aging schools FY 2016 in the amount of $65,328. We also have a small amount of $7,000 from the local CIP for the aging school project. And then we're gonna possibly need about $6,000 if we use the full contingency of $12,000. We hope that, that won't happen. In addition to those figures, the Department of Maintenance started the design process on this. They have paid about $18,500 for engineering fees to date and also covering the construction administration. So that's the, the funding mechanism. I will say that Earnshaw Brothers is ready to start this project immediately. We penciled in a tentative pre-construction meeting for next week. I've also assigned Mr. Bill Gross, my project manager, to this project. And Bill did the wastewater treatment plan at Chopticon High School. He also did the Margaret Brent Forest man. So he knows this type of, this type of work. So with that being said, it's gonna be our recommendation that you award the contract for the septic system repair and replacement at White Marsh to Earnshaw Brothers in the amount of $66,400 and authorize a construction contingency of $12,000. Go ahead, take your questions.
Ms. Lee?
No questions, thank you.
No questions, thank you.
I don't have any questions, thank you.
I have a couple. If you go back on the, on the schematic of where the field's gonna go, how much disruption, I mean, the area around White Marsh and then in the back where the septic field is gonna go is not that large.
It isn't.
So you have, you have like an athletic field or what the county likes to call an athletic field and then playground equipment.
Correct.
How much impact is that going to have on the children with, like, I mean, are they gonna be confined indoor to recess during the whole construction period?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
This really just takes out the softball field.
Okay.
The playground equipment is along that property line.
Okay.
An incident we're gonna come before you in a couple of weeks to talk about playground.
Yay.
And so that would be a separate project.
Behind White Marsh.
That will be a separate project, but there, there shouldn't be any impact.
Okay.
The principal's been involved in the planning and she's aware of this and so I really don't see any difficulty there.
Okay, and then I know that they're ready to start, but what's the length of time for the project?
Yeah, well, contractually it's 45 days.
Okay.
They're, they think they can knock it out in two weeks, but we'll see. I mean, weather's gonna be the big condition at this time of year. And I do wanna say technically, there's no reason we can't install it in the wintertime. It's just a matter of mud and water and the restoration may be the most challenging issue there. The other point I wanna make is that we did consult with Mr. Jeff Thompson, Director of Transportation, to make sure that this work could be done without disturbing the bus run.
Okay.
And he confirmed that.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you very much. Mrs. Washington?
A very thorough presentation, thank you.
Two, two questions for you. I believe we're going to try to maintain the 1970s septic tank. How, how long ago was it that staff had eyes on that to have an understanding of just what it looks like and, and is this feasible?
You know, it's a great question. The size of it that we have in the plans is based on pumping records. We're gonna do a little more investigation on that before we kinda move ahead. So we'll, we'll consult with the health department on that. We're sure that we can keep it.
Okay.
But it may, may have some design impacts.
Yeah, that's, I, when I saw 2,000 gallons, I mean, for, for that size school, granted, we had the 3,500 gallon tank, but that, that's, I mean, they, they use 2,000 gallon tanks for larger homes.
Yep.
So once you get over three or four bedrooms, you're, you're up into the 1,500 or 2,000.
Yep.
And, and so I, I was really surprised by that, but also just the deterioration that goes on.
Right.
Whether or not, you know, when they're pumping it, they're down far enough to really see what it looks like.
Again, that's why we have contingency to understand those things and we will field verify with the contractor the condition of the tank as well.
If we had to replace that, what, give me an idea of what that cost might be out of the contingency?
You know, I, I'm gonna say, you know, it's probably in the range of five to six
Okay.
for a straight septic.
And then you mentioned that there was gonna be a seven-foot trench out in front of the school, seven feet deep.
Yeah.
Just give me an idea of what you'll do to ensure the safety of the children and people who are wandering around that area.
Yeah, a couple things. One, the, the area will be barricaded off with construction fencing. Two, we're anticipating that contractor will use what they call a shield, which basically goes right in the trench and provides a kind of protective barrier in itself. So again, those, those would be a, a prime topic of our pre-construction meeting to make sure that we understand both the timing and the logistics of that. And that will probably be some of the last stuff that we do.
And I would imagine ultimately, depending on how much mud and guck, that the building service staff may need some reinforcements for a, a period of time. But thank you very much. The presentation was very comprehensive and, and I appreciate the information.
Any other questions? Okay, with that, do we have a motion for this recommended action?
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the contract award for the septic system repair and replacement at White Marsh Elementary School to Earnshaw Brothers, LLC in the amount of $66,400 and further authorizes a construction contingency of $12,000.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have an information item, fiscal year 2017 superintendent's recommended budgets.
Well, good evening from the other side of the room. This is gonna be a presentation in tandem. I'm gonna go through the first couple of slides and then when we get into the very specific details of the categorical totals and increases, I will, I will defer to the subject matter expert, Ms. Tammy McCourt.
Can I just add one thing to start?
You most certainly may.
We will be having...
We will be having a work session on this budget at a later time.
Yes.
So this is simply just the presentation.
This is the presentation, work session, coming back before you again, before we finalize. And that's the last slide in the deck, so.
No, I'm just kidding.
No, it wasn't, it was for everyone in the audience.
I'm just kidding.
Everyone in the audience. So first, understand that, that our guaranteed funding from year to year is completely predicated on our enrollment and our budget is predicated on per pupil expenditure. So when we take a look at how money comes into the system, it comes in from the federal, state and local funding formulas, and it's driven by enrollment. So our official enrollment for school year two thousand and fifteen was seventeen thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven students. But then when you looked at full-time equivalent students, it became a number of sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven. And that's what we use to do our calculation for our per pupil allocation. For this year, school year two thousand and sixteen, we have seventeen thousand nine hundred and forty-one bodies, students in our buildings from Judy Center, pre-K, all the way up through seniors. But only sixteen hundred nine, sixteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-three of them are eligible for aid calculation. So we actually have a delta of twenty-four eligible FTEs less. So what that means is that the state and the, and the local government, they, and even federal sources, they don't owe us any more money, they actually can fund us less. And even when you consider that, per pupil expenditures, maintenance of effort, which says you can't have less money this year than you had last year per student, it doesn't take into account inflation, incremental increases in fixed charges such as healthcare. It doesn't worry about instructional mandates, it doesn't care about technology in the classroom, and it doesn't take into account negotiation of employee compensation. But that's the reality that we live under. So when we built this budget, we really tried to make it as simple as possible. We went with two priorities. The first priority, if we go all the way back to our commitment statements that we began our year with, five point four was, we invest in our people. And we invest in our people in, through salaries and wages. And salaries and wages of our three associations, SEASMIC, ESMIC and SMASA. And on the other side of salaries and wages, we also have fixed charges. And fixed charges are healthcare, social security, retirement and workers' compensation insurance. In the budget that we will be presenting today, we are putting forth a recommendation for a hundred and forty-four million, five hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and ten dollars that would go directly towards salaries and wages. And ultimately, four, forty-eight million, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty, seven hundred and seventy, seven hundred and seventy-three hundred, seven?
Thousand.
Thousand.
Thousand, forty-eight million, seven hundred and seventy-three thousand, forty-one dollars for fixed charges. Now, of the budget we're going to present, that's a hundred and ninety-three million dollars. It's over ninety-one percent of all of the money. So when we talk about a two hundred and ten million dollar budget, which we're going to get to, the majority of that money, ninety percent of that money, goes right to salaries and wages and fixed charges slash benefits. We also have contracted services over in salaries and wages as well, because those are things that we pay for to educate our children. Our second priority is program. And we go back to our commitment statements, five point one, we invest in instructional resources. Five point three, we invest in technology to engage, educate and communicate. And what that means is, we invest in materials of instruction, we invest in textbooks, we invest in instructional software, we invest in computer hardware, all under the broader category of techno, textbooks and instructional supplies. Highlights in this budget include a request for one point four million dollars for science textbooks aligned to the next generation science standards, one point five million dollars for high school computers, and then incremental increases across all programs for materials of instruction, something that we have held flat or reduced over the last three budget cycles. Ultimately, just looking at textbooks and instructional supplies, we're talking about an increase in five point seven million dollars. So requested increases, if you look at it as a big, huge wheel, the blue relates to people. We're asking for requested four million dollars to cover negotiations. We're asking for two point four million dollars to cover the things that we have already negotiated, such as the, the annualization of the, of the steps for SEASMIC and ESMIC and the next steps for the SMASA unit that come due July one. We believe that we've been very judicious with healthcare. We've been watching the expenses that have come in, and we are modestly increasing the healthcare allocation by five percent. That's one point four million dollars. If you pay people more money, you have to pay them, you have to put more money in their pension, you have to pay more money in social security, and that's four hundred and eighty thousand dollars combined. One of the things that we're requesting is K-Paris positions that had been cut out of the budget over the last two years. We've come to realize that it is instructionally imperative that we have two people in a kindergarten classroom, a teacher and a para educator, to really cover what needs to be done to get the kids the, the start that they need. We've been watching special ed and specifically out-of-county placements. The costs go up, they're the only one thing that we're really worried about in this year's budget. So we need to allocate another five hundred thousand dollars to incur, to cover what we believe we're going to incur. A small amount of transportation money is set aside for additional routes and incremental increases for our contracted services within transportation. Two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in MOI and software for instructional programs to put in our classrooms. And then the last two, science textbooks and computers for high school. Ultimately, this amount of money is what's going to, we're going to detail as we go through each one of the categories. No matter what, we believe that we need to increase our budget by five million dollars. We have obligated the system through contract negotiations for two point four million dollars. No matter what, healthcare is going to be an additional cost, we believe it'll be one point four million dollars. Security, social security and pension are going to be included in that, special ed and transportation. The big picture, our two thousand and sixteen adopted budget was a little over two hundred million dollars. The budget that I'm putting forward for your consideration today is two hundred, is two hundred and eleven million dollars. It's an increase of ten point five million dollars. It's basically a five percent, five point three percent increase over the two thousand and sixteen. When we look at our funding sources, we recognize that we, half comes from local, the other half comes from state with a very small portion made up by federal and, and other resources. Outlined as we presented last year by, expense by category, we can see the two thousand and sixteen adopted budget, the two thousand and seventeen recommended budget, the delta over the request from the previous year, as well as the bottom total. At this point, I would like to hand it off to Ms. McCourt so she can go through each category and talk a little bit about where those increases come from. So we'll start with administration and Mrs. McCourt.
Good evening, board members. So we have thirteen categories, starting with the category of administration. You can see the historical costs on this screen. We're requesting an increase of one hundred and ninety-three thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars, representing a six percent increase. And that will cover the negotiated salary step progression for staff and reclassification of two positions and fiscal services. In mid-level administration, there's a requested increase of seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars or a five point four percent increase to go towards negotiated salary step progression for staff in addition to software maintenance. And the software maintenance is predominantly in the area of seventy thousand dollars for an increase for Microsoft software. The majority of our increases are going into instructional salaries and wages category, and that is four million dollars or a five point five percent increase. Additionally, we've, in, in addition to the negotiated salary step progression, we also have the twelve kindergarten paraeducators at a cost of five hundred thousand dollars. Textbooks and instructional supplies totaling two point three million dollars or a sixty-six point four percent increase will be for computer replacements at high schools and science textbooks, of which we're both, for both of those items, we're requesting a use of county fund balance. Other instructional costs reflecting a decrease of one point four million dollars or fifty-four percent. And this is as a result of the one-time use of fund balance that the county government provided this, this year to pay off a computer leases. Special education, an increase of one point one million dollars or a six point two percent increase going towards a negotiated salary step progression for staff in addition to the, the increase in the out-of-county placements I've been seeing over the past two years. The student personnel services, we're requesting an increase of one hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars or a ten point four percent increase for negotiated salaries. In the category of student health services, we're requesting an increase of one hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars or a seven point seven percent increase, also for negotiated salary increases. In student transportation, we're requesting an increase of one hundred and ninety-three thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars, a two percent increase for negotiated salary step increases in addition to increases for our contracted bus routes, in particular, three additional routes. Operation of plan, we're requesting an increase of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars or a point nine percent increase for negotiated step increases. And this amount also reflects a one FTE reclassification from our mid-level administration category. That would be a secretarial position being reclassified into a computer specialist position. For maintenance of plan, we're requesting an increase of one hundred and forty-three thousand, twenty-seven dollars or a three point eight percent increase for negotiated salary increases. And fixed charges, a two point five million dollar increase or a five point five percent for the social security increases associated with negotiations, pension costs associated with those increases and five percent for health insurance. And capital outlay, a seventy-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollar or a ten point four percent increase for negotiated salary. So once again, going back to the superintendent's budget priority, number one being people, we do invest in our people. We're looking at a total of one hundred and ninety-three point three million dollars or ninety-one point six percent of our budget towards compensation for employees. The second priority is the investment in instructional resources. We invest in technology to engage, educate and communicate. Specifically, we're looking for the increases of one point four million dollars for our science textbooks and one point five million dollars for the high school computers and incremental increases in materials of instruction, those, that category totaling five point seven million dollars. The slide before you is a fiscal briefing that was provided to the General Assembly from the Department of Legislative Services. This was just released last week. And of particular note, this is the per pupil state education aid. And this particular slide only focuses on the direct aid from the state. As you can tell, our increase for Saint Mary's County went up by one point seven percent, which also reflects a statewide average increase on the per pupil direct aid of one point seven percent. If you look at some of our surrounding counties, they actually had some larger increases, three percent in Calvert and three point three percent in Charles. What happens, going back to the superintendent's original slide, is that as the wealth in other jurisdictions increase, as our wealth increases, but not at the same proportionate level as the other county's wealth, our percentage of the increase in state aid decreases. So we're not getting as much of an increase in state aid as we had originally planned. So what we received just last Friday was, unfortunately, our expected state revenues of one hundred and one point seven million dollars or a three point one percent increase is not coming to fruition based on the proposed governor's budget. Instead, the current MSDE projections are actually at one hundred point four million dollars, which reflects a decrease in what we had proposed to you within the superintendent's budget of one point three million dollars. So the original budget as admitted reflected a two point eight percent, two point eight million dollar increase in state revenues, whereas we're only seeing a one point four million dollars based on what the governor has proposed at this time. Three important dates coming up, there is a budget work session scheduled on February tenth. On February seventh, seventeenth, the Board of Education Budget Public Hearing. And then on February twenty-fourth, the budget will be presented for your approval. Are there any questions at this time?
Ms. Lee?
Oh, no questions, thank you.
Mr. Carney?
A couple of questions. At one time, the breakdown was pay and fringes of eighty-five percent. And then utilities and transportation were ten percent, which left five percent for textbooks, computers, light bulbs and toilet paper. And I see now that the salary and benefits is over ninety-one percent. Utilities haven't gone down, transportation's going up. What kind of a squeeze does that put on all other?
Well, the majority of the increase that you've seen and that percentage going to compensation is as a result of us picking up more of the pension costs that have been passed on by the state. So certainly that does create much more of a squeeze in all of our other areas, for example, technology and textbooks.
And what fuel costs did you use to build the, the transportation budget?
We used three dollars a gallon.
Three dollars a gallon. Thank you.
I don't have any overall questions. I have, I have a lot of little ones, which during our work session I'll be going over with you.
I don't have anything. I think a very comprehensive presentation. I particularly appreciated the, the year-over-year comparison. I think that it truly shows where we are, where we were and where we are now. And then hopefully where we'd like to be with a funded budget. So thank you very much. Mrs. Washington?
I think your presentation was very clear and easy to understand. It was concise. And I look forward to our budget work session and our public hearing to hear what the citizens have to say. And I, I think you did a very good job. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Lynn? I appreciate the detail in the budget binder that you've given us. It really makes it so much easier to be able to go back and look to see where the differences are and what is driving those differences. To piggyback on Mr. Carney's comment, he was thinking exactly what I was. When I started, the, the personnel costs were eighty-three to eighty-five percent of the budget and everything else was that fifteen to seventeen percent. And it really has changed as a result of us having to absorb those pension costs, but also OPEB. So there are a lot of things that have been put onto us that we've not had control over. And, and that has driven a great deal of this. So thank you for putting this together. And I look forward to the work session to be able to talk about the budget and where we go from here. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone, anything else?
Other than, there is indeed uploaded a, a multi-page document for public consumption as well that, that mirrors what the board has. The board has a, has more, more specific detail down to the, down to the individual item. But there's a lot of, there's a lot of work ahead. There's definitely a lot of work ahead as, as, you know, we have built a budget. We do recognize what the county commissioners have said about their projections for growth and for revenue. And we have gone out of our way not to include additional FTEs other than the twelve K paraeducators positions that we have cut out of previous budgets. I, I know that that's, that's always, that's always an issue. The county commissioners coming, coming to it from a business standpoint, say, well, you don't have more students, so you don't need more people. Well, obviously educators would argue that as mandates and expectations evolve, you have to put personnel in place to, to cover that. That being said, you know, we're proposing a budget that's got a five percent increase in overall cost. And so far, the only known revenue that we have is one point four million dollars. So we recognize that there is a great deal of, of work ahead and conversations to be carried. The one thing that we all feel very strongly about is that Saint Mary's County Public School is a great school system, and it is a great school system because of the people in it. And so we build a budget knowing that we need to take care of our people first. So thank you, Mrs. McCourt, for your work and for all the work that will follow.
If I may, just one moment. Mabe has, has been able to gather sponsors for the legislation that they have proposed with respect to how pre-K students are or are not counted and how they are dealt with within the budget. And I am happy to provide that, that legislation to you. And it would be my suggestion And I am happy to provide that, that legislation to you, and it would be my suggestion that we, as a board, consider whether or not it is appropriate and timely for us to weigh in on that. I personally would like to see us do so.
Oh, absolutely.
Especially as, as that bill goes to hearing, adding our voice and, and circumstances to the mix, I think, would be very, very important.
I agree.
That's it.
Okay. With that, I have two announcements here. The next regularly scheduled board meeting will be on Wednesday, February tenth at nine AM, a few days before Valentine's Day, for anyone who's keeping track, and then the public budget hearing on the superintendent's recommended operating budget for two thousand seventeen, as we see up there, will be on Wednesday, February seventeenth at six PM.
And just so everyone knows, we have indeed called a two-hour delay code one for Thursday, so, take a few moments, make sure you're safe outside. The roads may be slick in spots, and we want everybody to get to school and learning safely.
That's right. And with that, we are adjourned.